I'll get the squishy chair.
Is that good?
Welcome, and we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Reed will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Father, it is good to be here again tonight, Lord, and we are thankful for the opportunity that you've given each one of us to represent our constituents. I ask that you be with us tonight again, Lord, and give us the wisdom and guidance that we need to be able to make the decisions that honor not only those who elected us, but our entire county. And we're thankful for a weekend that's coming up like this. I think I speak for all of us, Lord, and thank you for the mothers that you've placed in our lives. We ask that you place a special blessing on them this weekend as we celebrate them. Again, Lord, be with us tonight as we do the people's business. May we honor you with our words, our actions, and our deeds, and we ask all these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kooch.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
And Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
We have a quorum, 19 present.
All right, thank you very much. Have been given a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, I believe. Do we have a motion, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order. I move that we dispense with the reading and for their approval.
And second from Mrs. Cook. Did anyone have any additions or corrections? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we have a time for public comments, and this is an opportunity for anyone that wishes to speak. Come forward and give your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes, so please try to adhere to that if you can. Mr. Jim Daniels.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I'm here tonight for two things. First of all, I support Mike Lyles for the vacancy created by the resignation of Shawn Kaplan. Mike is well-qualified. In fact, he's probably more qualified than most of us when we come to the commission. He was a private businessman. He served on the commission in the past. He served in the state legislature, and then later served in the Tennessee Department of Labor as one of the directors of TOSHA. I recommend him most highly. My second issue is the funding of Rob Mitchell's budget. When Rob is properly funded, when the tax assessors' function is properly funded and fully funded, they bring more money in. That's the long and short of it. I've got more statistics and things I could cite, but I think you all have available to you all of that. I simply wanted to say, please, for the benefit of us who pay the taxes, see to it that the assessments are able to keep up with the taxes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. There's no one else that's signed up to speak, so we're ready to go into elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to prove, and Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Phillips and others there. Does anyone have anyone that needed to be added or otherwise? All right, if not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, on the commission agenda, we need to fill the vacancy for District 19 that was made vacant by Commissioner Kaplan's resignation. Commissioners, we did bring forward two names, and steering would like to nominate Ms. Joyce Ely and Mr. Mike Lyles for consideration for this position, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for those nominations.
All right. And Mr. Sereno said second. All right, now just a moment. Is there any other nominations that anyone wishes to make from the floor? All right, there's no one rising, so those two will be the only two nominees that we have. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the rules and allow both applicants three minutes to present themselves to the full commission.
And a second, Commissioner McAdoo. And, all right, that being the case, we will allow these two to speak, and I guess I'll have to arbitrarily just say we're going to go alphabetically. Is that okay with you, Mr. Johnson? Mrs. Ely, if you'd like to speak to us and tell us about yourself, please come forward.
Many of you know my work on the commission and my commitment to District 19. I was first elected to the commission in 1990. I served until August of 2014. During my tenure on the commission, I served on various committees, spending most of my time on the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, where I served as chairman for 12 years. I stated on my application that my work on the county commission is my community service. And when I reflect back over my time on the county commission, I feel a sense of pride in what the commission has accomplished, especially in providing essential government services based on sound fiscal management. And as one of 21 commissioners, I feel a sense of pride in what the commission has accomplished through partnerships. Individual commissioners partnering with each other, working through the committee process, partnering with department heads, partnering with the county mayor. I would be honored to continue this work with the county commission and to represent District 19. I would appreciate your consideration, and I thank you very much.
Mr. Lyles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, county commissioners. My name's Mike Lyles. I live at 2421 Oak Nashville Highway, which is right next to Stones River National Battlefield in the heart of the 19th District. And I'm here tonight to offer my name for replacement and acceptance of the 19th District. I've served as county commissioner in the past, and I've had successes as county commissioner. And I'm happy to tell you that we have been a better county because of the service that I provided in the past and the partnerships that I developed during that time. Alan McAdoo, Jeff Phillips, Robert P. Senior, we all gathered together to form a planning commission that would be self-sustaining and one that would benefit Rutherford County with the Code's Department. And I'm happy to tell you tonight that the Code's Department, which was funded with a $10,000 seed money at that time, will soon in this next budget cycle reach $1 million in revenue. It's serving every member of Rutherford County by placing value on their property. Alan was part of that team. Jeff was part of that team. Robert P. Senior was part of that team. It takes teamwork and participation and hard work to get these things done. We were also able, on that same county commission, to extend Thompson Lane and connect Broad Street with Highway 96, Oak Fork Parkway. That opened up the west end of the county and developed an area right now that generates a lot of revenue for a lot of folks. And in fact, Murphysboro reported that they get 10% of their sales tax revenue from that area. We also have hospitals, and I tell you, I think that we have a representative of every major restaurant chain in that area. We also have exits on I-24 that was a result of the Thompson Lane extension. As state representative, I was able to work on 840, Highway 96, Highway 99, 231, and as a representative of the 49th District, I was able to set in place a motion to get new exits for this area. After my time as a county commissioner, I worked as a director of TOSHA, where I brought in a program known as VPP, a safety program that is in operation today and still making people safe today, Voluntary Protection Program. I retired and served the community in several ways. I'm presently president of the Friends of Stones River National Battlefield. The battlefield, located in the heart of the 19th District, brings in about 300,000 visitors annually and has a revenue of $20 million impact on this area. I also serve as a volunteer committee on the Election Commission, where we're going to be announcing a new way to vote. It's going to be called convenience centers, and it's going to make it easier for the average person to vote, and I'm involved in that. And our administrator, Alan Farley, will be announcing that program in the very near future. You want the same thing that I want. You want the best for Rutherford County, or you wouldn't be here tonight. I think I offer that. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two nominees. And in order for each of you to have an opportunity to make your own vote personally without necessarily trying to influence the votes of the others, what we have prepared here is a paper ballot for each one of you with your name on it and your district number on it. We're going to ask our clerk to pass these out. You are, when you receive these, you are to check which one of these nominees you choose to vote for. You are to sign the piece of paper. They will then be picked up by Mrs. Crowell. Then she will come back with those, and she will publicly read those out as to how you have voted. So it will be a public notice vote, but you will do it in your own private time right there at your own desk, without these folks over here telling everyone you have your voting, and maybe influencing or not influencing, I don't know, your vote, but we just think it'll be a more independent process. Mr. Mayor, there's no discussion? No, sir. There could have been, but no one was, rose to say anything afterwards. Does everyone have their ballot, and is your name on that ballot? I want to be sure that's... So now you may cast your votes, please. Now, Mrs. Crowell, I believe everyone is likely finished, so let's start back over here where you started, hanging them out with number one, okay? Because these back here may not be quite finished. Please sign those ballots. So as she reads those out, you may keep your own tally, and Mr. Spence will keep a tally, and this will all be recorded as voted on by name in the minutes, and Mr. Robertson and others will also confirm. Mrs. Crowell.
Commissioner Schaefer, Ely. Commissioner Piercy, Ely. Commissioner Jordan, Ely. Commissioner P., Ely. Commissioner Cook, Ely. Commissioner Jernigan, Ely. Commissioner Reed, Lyles. Commissioner Gurley, Ely. Commissioner Turner, Lyles. Commissioner Allen, Ely. Commissioner Stevens, Ely. Commissioner Johnson, Lyles. Commissioner Baum, Ely. Commissioner Nipper, Ely. Commissioner Dodd, Ely. Commissioner Phillips, Ely. Commissioner McAdoo, Lyles. Commissioner Gooch, Ely. Commissioner Serenio, Ely.
Hey, our clerk, Ms. Crowell has certified the election. Fifteen votes for Mrs. Ely and four votes for Mr. Lyles. Therefore, Ms. Ely, you are our newly elected commissioner for the 19th District. Congratulations. Now, Ms. Ely, this will be your option. If you choose to be sworn in right now, we will do it, and you can take the seat in the 19th District position. If you prefer to wait to another, later date and start serving later, that's okay, but we're prepared to do whatever you wish to do. So what's your wishes, Ms. Ely?
Come on, they want you to come on.
They want you to come on. Okay, so if you're doing me up there, I'm going to come down there. Okay, Ms. Ely, come over here just a moment and repeat after me if you will. I, Joyce Ely.
I, Joyce Ely.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will execute.
That I will execute.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties of county commissioner.
The duties of county commissioner.
In the 19th District.
In the 19th District.
Of Rutherford County, Tennessee.
Of Rutherford County, Tennessee.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And to which I am.
And to which I am.
About to assume.
About to assume.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Partiality or favor.
Partiality or favor.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We declare this the 11th day of May, 2017, and, Ms. Ely, I will sign here, and you will sign right there. All right, well, thank you very much, and you may be seated. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Turner, please continue with the elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Ely, welcome back. It's just like riding a bike. Steering, we'd like to move forward with the appointment of Judicial Commissioner Rhonda Campbell. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for the approval of this appointment.
And a second, Mr. Nipper. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Steering would like to also announce three vacancies on the Limeball Library Board, and Steering would like to also announce a vacancy on the Stones River Regional Library Board. Mr. Chairman, that's our report for the elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. All right. Next is a resolution to approve the consent agenda, and we'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those items. I find all of them proper to be placed on the consent agenda, and barring anyone wishing to remove an item, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. All right, is there anyone that wishes to remove any of those items listed there from this consent agenda? No one is wishing to do that, so we are then ready to vote, and this is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. Now everyone has voted.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
19 yes, 1 no. Motion passes.
I need... This thing had a heart attack on me.
It needs to be yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Spence, can you let the minutes reflect that Mr. Johnson voted yes on that resolution to approve the consent agenda? Okay, we do not have any unfinished business. I don't believe, Mr. Jordan, that we have time to really get into your report too much, so without objection, we're going to go run into public hearings. We're just a minute or two off of our actual 6:30 time, but I don't think that should be a problem. Therefore, this is a resoning request, 17-8004, on behalf of Penny and Mike Matthews, located at 7800 Highway 99. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is office professional on a site of about 2 and 1/2 acres. Mr. Demossi, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor Burgess, members of the commission. This first application is for property located along Highway 99. The applicant is proposing to construct a family medical practice on the property. The applicant will be the provider, and will have a staff of three other persons. She also states she will focus on health prevention and education as well as the medical care. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets, as well as a picture of an example of what the building would look like. Medical clinics are classified as medical services, which are allowed by right in the office professional district. This first came before the Planning Commission back in March of this year. The first public hearing, there were a number of concerns raised about the drainage on the property, as well as some of the residents in the area had some concern about additional commercial property being added to the area as well. The Planning Commission, excuse me, deferred the application in order to give the applicant a chance to determine whether or not the proposed improvements that they were wanting to do on the property would be able to be accommodated on the site. A few days after the first Planning Commission meeting, the applicants came and met with staff and agreed to provide a concept plan that was more to scale than the one that they originally had submitted. The applicant felt, and quite frankly, staff agreed, that the original concept plan that was provided really showed the building and the parking areas being a lot larger than they were intended to be. Actually, if you did a scale of it, I think the building ended up being like 20,000 to 30,000 square feet or something like that, when in reality, they're looking to build somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet. So after looking at what the scale drawing looked like, staff looked at it, along with myself, along with our county engineer, Mike Hughes, and determined that there was ample room on the property to make any necessary improvements as far as the building, the parking, and most importantly, any drainage issues that needed to be addressed. This property is located within the Rockvale Rural Center, as identified in the comprehensive plan. Highway 99 is also identified as an urban corridor. Non-residentially zoned properties are located already within 900 feet to the west of this site. After receiving this updated concept plan, we do feel comfortable with this. Staff did recommend approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval by a unanimous vote at their April meeting. I will say also in your agenda packets that we did have one of the neighbors in the area submit a number of pictures regarding some of the drainage concerns he had in the area. Those have been included with your agenda packets, and you can find those on your iPad. The applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that she might have.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Demossi? All right, Mr. Demossi, then, stand aside, and we'll see. Therefore, we will declare the public hearing open for those that wish to speak for or against this resoning request, 17-8004. Now is your opportunity to come forward and make your comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against? Come on up. I still see someone that's risen, so this is your time.
Good evening. I'm Penny Matthews. I'm a nurse, family nurse practitioner, and my husband and I have purchased this property at 7800 Highway 99 about two months ago. Our endeavor with the property was to build a family practice, to support a family, a small community. We both have been public servants, working in the medical field for over 25 years, with a sincere desire to help others in their time of need. I have been... I've been a registered nurse since 1992. I've spent sixteen years at a Level One Trauma Center, called Orlando Regional Medical Center, and ten years at Bedford County Medical Center, and then my last three years at a private, private family practice. Most of my working hours have included ICU, trauma, emergency room, so, and pediatrics. Therefore, I'm very familiar and proficient with all age groups. I moved here in 2003 and quickly found that I love this small hometown atmosphere in Tennessee. My jobs have always consisted of working for someone else. But frankly, with this constant changing environment of healthcare, I'm tired of being told what to do, work faster, and focus more on reimbursement, and limit my time with my patients. Therefore, I made this pivotal endeavor to venture out and start my own practice. So with the encouragement of my husband, fellow practitioners, and physicians, I did it. I followed my dream and purchased this property. My husband and I have decided on the type of clinic that we preferred to come up with, in this small hometown medical office with a huge heart to meet the needs of others. This clinic will be very eye appealing and convenient to the Rockvale community. Its location is perfect to meet the needs of the families in the area during their busy days. We have considered all the necessities of the community, and we strive to meet them. We do not intend on making this a large sterile environment, but to promote a welcoming and comfortable clinic, a place that they can have confidence to take good care of them and address all of their healthcare needs. I enjoy spending time with patients and educating until they comprehend all of their healthcare issues. I love to teach and promote wellness, and the key to health promotion is to keep the people involved in their own healthcare, because it's, as they say, it takes two to tango. This clinic will have easy access to receive healthcare in emergencies, such as lacerations, upper respiratory infections, urinary problems, allergies, wounds, sprains, rashes, abdominal pains, sore throats, earaches, and of course, will manage long-term healthcare issues, such as diabetes, hypertension, dyslipidemia, prostates, and thyroid issues, and along with preventable screenings, immunizations, and diagnostic testings. Furthermore, I'll also do DOT exams, well exams, sports physicals, just to list a few. Now, I'm sure you're wondering why I chose this particular location. Well, to begin with, I wanted a place that was close to home, so I could do what I love to do, help others when they need me the most. And this property does that for me. It allows me to be more accessible in a pinch. And the second requirement of the location was a need. Rockvale has a huge need, their lack in the close proximity needed to attend to their acute and chronic healthcare issues. Therefore, with that, I could not be happier than to be surrounded by a community in which I could assist and facilitate their healthcare outcomes. And as you can see with my employment history, that once I've selected a place to dedicate all of my energy and heart into, I stick with it. And with that being said, I'd like to dedicate my next twenty years to you, here in Rockville, Tennessee.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against this request?[841.82][841.82](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, my name is Eddie Makin, and I reside at 9970 Concord Road in Rockvale. As in the previous public hearing, I'm here to offer, uh, my support for this clinic. I think it is a good thing. It offers a service to our community, to the community that we really need, and it also adds a certain degree of character to our already great community. We all know that the medical profession is, is a really high, highly rated and respected profession, so I think this is an opportunity to even add more to our community. I am a somewhat of an amateur historian, or student of history, and when I first heard this request, I started doing some research of the Rockvale area about, uh, medical care, and what was happening, and what has happened in the past. Found out where, there were doctors that actually worked out of their homes, and had patients coming up in cart, and wagons and carts, and, and horses, and whatever mode of transportation they could find at the time. So if this medical clinic comes to fruition, I recommend that with, maybe I can help the owners with, a plaque should be placed somewhere in that clinic that states the following: "Rockvale Family Practice, Serving the Medical Needs of Rockvale and Other Communities in Southern Rutherford County by Following in the Footsteps of Dr. Manier, 1850; Dr. John Dykes, 1870; Dr. John Garrett, Starting in the 1900s." This is nothing different than what we've had all the way back to, uh, 1850. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Evening, I'm Todd Fisher, I'm a Rockvale resident myself, and, uh, I'm very much in favor of it, uh, with the growing area. It's all y'all know if you've been, I've been here from Florida for twelve years, and this place is really exploding. And out near us, there's not really anything convenient, and with, you've got Rockvale Elementary, Rockvale Middle School, and a new high school that's due to open in a couple more years, it would be a really great asset and very convenient to a lot of families in the community now, and how it is gonna grow in the future. So I would hope that y'all would cast your votes and approve this, 'cause it's very much needed in that area, and it would be really convenient and great for the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Siccoloni, I am a homeowner in Rockville. I also used to own this land on Highway 99. There are already properties and commercial businesses on Highway 99 very close to this property, that have been there before some of these homes. Here are a few. In 1987, the mill shop, which is now Hank's Trailer, that makes thirty years. In 1993, the post office of twenty-four years. In 2002, Citco Gas Station of fifteen years, also the produce market. Further down the road is Thompson Services and Triton Construction. All of these businesses we use and appreciate. We lost Marty's Automotive to Highway 231 in Christiana. Let's not lose any more small businesses here in Rockville, especially when it comes to our local healthcare for our families. I support Penny and Mike and their clinic. I hope our commissioners and the community feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone else coming forward.
Hey, my name's, uh, Mike Matthews, I'm Penny's husband, and I just wanted to address, I think the biggest concern we had was, there were, the neighbors were concerned about water. Um, from what I've seen, there's, this property doesn't hold any water. There's a huge dry creek that runs the entire length of this property, and, uh, talking with Mike and Doug, we've agreed that if needed, we'll dig a retention pond, which would actually help retain any water that, that would come off this property, or would go onto somebody else's property if we did nothing. So I think that, uh, we got that under control, the, the water aspect, we're gonna take care of that, and we just appreciate your, your support in our clinic. Thank you.
Okay, is it, does anyone else wish to speak? All right, not seeing anyone else rising, we will declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Reed, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think these commissioners here have heard about his, Rockvale name mentioned in the last few sessions, uh, as often as, probably as much as Murphysboro in this area. And I guarantee you, this isn't the first time, or the last time, you're gonna hear Rockvale mentioned. But, uh, I would like to make the motion that we approve this, uh, this motion here, and with the stipulations that the staff has placed here.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Dodd, any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, uh, I looked at the pictures that were in here. I heard Mr. Matthews talking about a retention pond, but here's my question, there's nothing in here, in what we have, that says that, uh, retention pond is required, and my question is, is there anything the county is gonna do? If the county doesn't do anything, and other peoples, and this gets approved, and other people's property, when heavy rains come, get water on there, who's liable?
No, uh, to answer your question, uh, being that this is the rezoning stage, uh, we don't require them to show detailed drainage calculations or anything at this time. If this is approved, the next step would be an engineered site plan, which would have to show detention, uh, whether water's gonna go drain, all the aspects of a site plan. Uh, detention will be required, I, I know Mr. Matthews had said something about if it's going to be required now. It's probably not gonna be very large, just because of what they're building, isn't that large of a building, and the parking areas, it won't displace that much water. But any development that the county reviews, uh, has to be in compliance with both the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, as well as our stormwater manuals. So that would include detention, retention, and all that. So no more water can go off-site than what was going off prior to that development taking place. So that's something we would take care of at the site plan stage.
Any other questions or, or discussion, then? If you're ready to vote, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. Next is rezoning request seventeen dash eight zero zero nine, Land Company Holdings, by Jim Heisen, located at eight and two ninety-four Amleville Road and seventy-four forty-nine Old Shores Road. Existing zoning is planned unit development. The proposed request is a planned unit development amendment to allow townhomes, instead of single-family dwellings on a site of about sixty-one acres. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located, uh, along the, where Old Shores Road, El Calla Road, the new intersection, and Amleville Road all intersect. This property probably looks pretty familiar to the commissioners. Uh, this just was brought before you, just a few months ago, back in January. Uh, the Watercrest PUD, again, was originally approved back in January by this board. Uh, soon after this approval was granted, the applicant inquired to staff about the possibility of replacing the single-family element with a townhome element. Uh, staff informed the applicant at that time that if they wished to pursue that, that would be a major deviation to the planned development approval, and they would have to go back through the process, uh, to, for the amendment, the same process as they went through to get the planned development approved in the first place. Uh, according to the information provided by the applicant, and you do have a copy of the pattern book on your iPads, as well as our staff comments, uh, again, they are wanting to replace the single-family element with townhomes. Uh, the total number of units is actually being reduced. The original was eighty-two single-family units, they're looking to do sixty-eight townhome units. Units are a little bit smaller than what the original single-family element would be from twelve, they're going to twelve hundred square feet from sixteen hundred. Uh, they'd be at least two-bedroom units. All units would have one-car garage, and the unit frontages originally were going to consist of fifty percent, uh, masonry material, but, uh, after the Planning Commission discussed this, they did bump that up to seventy percent, which the applicant was, was perfectly fine with. Uh, all other aspects of the original planned development are to remain unchanged. Uh, again, I just refer you to your pattern book on your iPads, if you have any more specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at that time. Consistent with the regulations in the zoning ordinance, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on March ninth, 2017. Uh, actually, nobody in the neighborhood, uh, that was advertised showed up to the meeting. It was myself, the applicant, and the applicant's design engineer that were, well, uh, that were at the, at the meeting. Uh, from an overall impact standpoint, uh, staff does not believe the change from single-family units to townhomes is gonna have any kind of an additional impact, especially considering that there's fewer units than what were originally proposed. Uh, staff was pretty much neutral on the request. I could really take it one way or the other, it didn't really matter to me. Uh, there was significant amount of discussion on the ownership of the units, whether they be owner versus rent or occupied, uh, again, and there was also a question about the amount of brick masonry material, which I've already discussed, that, uh, was bumped up to seventy percent. Uh, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, the applicant is, is present.
Mr. Gurley.
If I understand this right, this should reduce the traffic flow in and out of this particular...
From an overall standpoint, it should. Typically, uh, single-family units, you're looking at about ten trips per day. Uh, multifamily units, especially when you have less of them, uh, they typically don't have as high, uh, trips per day, just because typically, there's not as many people living in them. But the fact that you're reducing the number by about, was that four, um, eighty-two to sixty, about fourteen, uh, I would expect that you have less traffic on the west side of Amleville Road, coming out to Amleville than you would have originally.
That is a big concern of mine, even though it's out, out of my district by a bit. Uh, a lot of my constituents travels to and from that stretch, and you have eight forty there, you have a short stretch of Amleville Road, and then you have this new El Calla development that's going to be putting a lot of people in and out, and then...
Right. Yeah, and there are gonna be...
Without any improvement, this should be, theoretically should be a five-lane road, going in and out, uh, along there, but it's not, it's a two-lane road.
Right. And as part of the South Haven development, there are gonna be some traffic improvements located at the intersection of Amleville, and where the new El Calla Road intersection is coming out. Actually, that Old Shores Road, um, you're not gonna be, it's not gonna be a through street anymore, you'll still be able to access, the, the homes that are there will still be able to access Old Shores, but that road's actually gonna be blocked off, and then all that traffic will come out onto the new intersection where El Calla comes in. Right, I understand. But there are proposed traffic improvements in that area as well, and we'll monitor this as, as well, you know, as far as traffic signals and things like that, turn signal analysis, and those kind of things, so we'll monitor that.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yep, okay, so this is gonna take up a lot less land. So what's gonna, he gonna use the rest of that land for, is it? And what possibly could he use the rest of that land for?
Well, the, the rest of the land on the west side of Amleville Road, uh, I mean, basically what he's asking for in his planned development application right now is what he can do with it. Uh, the rest, he's got the townhome units, the rest of it's just gonna be open space. Uh, that's what his planned development pattern book calls for. If he wanted to change that, he would have to come back through this whole process and do this again. Now, on the east side of the road, well, uh, let me, let me back up. On the west side of the road, there's also along the inner, uh, right near the intersection, there are, there is a small commercial node right there, but that was approved as part of the original development, so that's never really not changing. On the east side of the road, uh, there's also a larger commercial element on that side, again, that's not changing either. So really, the only change he's making is taking the single-family units, changing them to townhomes, and then you've got the small commercial element on that western side as well. But as far as the remaining land in the back, that'll be open space, unless he decides to come back with another amendment to the planned development, which would require this process.
Can you put single-family units back there?
Only if he went back and changed his, his pattern book to state that. Right now, he's, since it's a planned development, it's very specific to what he's asking for.
Other questions of Mr. Demossi? All right, if not, then Mr. Demossi stands aside, so we will declare the rezoning request seventeen eight eight zero zero nine, the public hearing open. Those that wish to speak for or against this request, please come forward and make
Good evening, Mayor, good evening Commissioners. Rob Mulch of the SEC, on behalf of Jim Heisen tonight. Um, Mr. Heisen's request is more or less to, you know, take the single-family element away and bring on townhomes. We were approached after we got through the original zoning process from the single-family approach by a client that wanted to look at doing townhomes in this area, um, and felt that it would be a good fit in regards to the, you know, the connection directly to eight forty. Um, so the plan more or less takes away fourteen lots overall, so fourteen homes, and altogether in regards to the property, but it also consolidates the actual development footprint, and back to Commissioner Schaefer's question, regards to what we'll be doing with the rest of the property. The other side, the western side of the creek itself, will remain as purely open space. So before the previous plan, we were planning on actually utilizing the other side of the creek side, so, um, that side is much more difficult in terrain. We felt it was a better footprint in regards to the townhomes actually shrinking up the developable area of the property, and, uh, and then we would then put in a footbridge as part of our open space program, or we're gonna put a footbridge in across Stewart Creek in order to access that open space over there for hiking and walking through the hills and such like that. We'll also be putting in, uh, a little trail system and stuff along, primarily along the eastern side of the creek, but a little portion that will also extend over on the western side, and then people can feel free to wander through the rest of the foothills over on that side. So that's primarily the intent and reason why we've come back for this requested amendment on the, uh, project, and I will be willing to answer any questions this time or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is anyone else that wishes to speak? Come on forward then, sir.
I'm Doug Kerrigan. I own twenty acres that I noticed the gentleman that's left here had mentioned he was going to put a bridge over to the land so they could walk freely on the land on the other side. Well, that land is a short distance. I have twenty acres in there and I invested to purchase that land to hunt on. And a lot of people's against hunting, but I'm a hunter. So what I'm requesting is for this gentleman to put up a fence and then a two-string fence above that on the property line, so I don't have those people wandering over my land where I like to hunt. And also on sixty acres through the tunnel on the other side, which I'm going to develop a home over there and I have access to that from ninety-six. So that's my request, is I'm just looking for someone to, in writing, to have a fence and it's going to be posted, no hunting, so that I don't want those people to wander on my land. And I have two other hunting buddies on the land all the way over to Williamson County, and I think they feel the same as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others that wish to speak? If not, then no one else is coming forward, we declare the public hearing for rezoning request seventeen A zero zero nine closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Gooch.
A motion to approve, Mr. Chair, with conditions.
And a second, Commissioner Jordan. Further discussion? All right, there being none, all of you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. Rezoning request seventeen dash A zero ten, South Haven Development located along Ocala Road. Existing zoning is planned unit development and a residential medium density. The proposed zoning is, well, that is the proposed zoning, I think. Approximately one point seven acres from RM to PUD and approximately one point seven acres from PUD to RM. All right, so Mr. Demossi, you may clear that up.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a little, this is a little unusual, I'll give you that. Hopefully, it'll make a little more sense after I explain it. The planned development zoning for the South Haven Development, which is just down from the property we just considered a moment ago to the east on Ocala Road, was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners back in February of two thousand and fifteen. An amendment to the original approval was approved in August of that same year. The developers of South Haven have submitted a preliminary plan for an adjacent property along Ocala Road, and the development is called the Preserve, so it's not actually part of the South Haven Development, although the applicants are the same. This plan was approved at the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen Planning Commission meeting. Essentially, what they're asking for is the applicant's proposing to do like a small land swap, swapping approximately one point seven acres between the two developments to facilitate the development of the Preserve, which is developed as an RM, just a traditional RM subdivision. These are both being transferred for being used as open space, so there's really no additional houses or anything being proposed here. The zoning lines for these properties are established using the property lines. So when South Haven originally came before you, the legal description that was granted did it by the property lines. When they do a re-subdivision of the property, the re-subdivision, even though you're moving the property lines, that doesn't move the zoning lines. So by switching the properties, the zoning doesn't change, which is why they're asking for this small land swap. So we've directed the applicant to file this request to make the zoning lines match the new property lines. That's really all they're doing in that regard. No new lots are being created as a result of this change and nothing else is being changed in regards to the South Haven Development. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi?
I hope that was as clear as mud.
All right then, thank you, sir. Therefore, the rezoning request seventeen eight zero ten is, the public hearing is open for those that wish to make comments. Does anyone wish to speak? All right, no one wishes to speak for or against this, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Gooch.
A motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Right, do we have a second? Commissioner Chantos Arino. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Rezoning request seventeen A eleven. Applicant Dwayne Brooks located at sixty-six forty Shores Road. Existing zoning is commercial neighborhood and proposed zoning is commercial general on about twenty-four acres. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Shores Road. On page two of three of the staff report, you'll see under the background a proposed use, there's a detailed history of the property as far as past zoning approvals. I'm not going to get into that unless you have specific questions, I'll be more than happy to, but for the sake of time, I'll just jump right into the request. During the zoning ordinance update that we did a few years ago, we made the recommendation on this specific property to zone the property back to residential due to the fact that no commercial use was ever established and the conditional use permits spoken of in the previous paragraph had all been voided. Since staff, yeah, since the original use is approved, would have required a more intense zoning classification. And considering that the applicant didn't have any plans for the property, we were reluctant to recommend a more intense zoning classification. During one of the planning and commission meetings, when the current zoning ordinance was being discussed, the applicant did request to retain a non-residential zoning designation, so ultimately, commercial neighborhood, its current zoning was what was adopted for that particular property, which became effective July fir, excuse me, January first of two thousand and thirteen. The owner of the property requested a zoning change to this property a little earlier this year. It came to the planning commission back in February of this year. They were requesting light industrial for the property. The applicant expressed a desire to utilize the property for the uses originally approved back in two thousand and four, again, which the staff report goes into more detail on. We recommended denial of the request following a significant, just because of the fact that we just didn't feel that industrial zoning and the uses associated with that were really appropriate for that portion of Shores Road. Following significant discussion on this application, the planning commission did recommend denial and the applicant withdrew that request. The current applicant, who is Mr. Brooks, is requesting commercial general for the property. We have three commercial classifications. We have commercial neighborhood, commercial services, and commercial general. Commercial neighborhood is the least, I should say, the most restrictive, whereas commercial general is the least, and commercial services is kind of in the middle. Essentially, what he wants to do is a directional drilling business. He would like to build an office and storage building. Along with that, there is a concept plan along with your, rest of your agenda materials that you can see on your iPad. He would have access from Shores Road. Any improvements for access, of course, would have to be done through the highway department. Landscaping, he'd still be required to do a type-two landscape buffer around the property and he would still be subject to the performance standard. So really, what he's asking for is just going from one commercial classification to a more intense classification. Staff does have a higher comfort level with this request rather than an industrial classification. The CG zone does allow him to develop the proposed business that he's looking to do, but eliminates the concerns we had as staff regarding the potential industrial zoning along Shores Road. There was a lot of discussion regarding this at the planning commission about the appropriateness of the zoning and whether it was the best use for the area. But after discussion, the planning commission did ultimately recommend approval by a seven for two against vote. Both the applicant and property owner are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? All right then, thank you, sir. Therefore, the public hearing for rezoning request seventeen A eleven is open and available to those that wish to speak for or against. Come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Taylor from SEC located eight-five-zero Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. I am representing Mr. Brooks tonight. He does want to move his existing business that's currently located over in the Southgate Park area on the south side of I twenty-four off South Church Street from that location to the proposed location tonight. It is a directional boring company, as Mr. Demossi had already indicated. It's very low-impact, as you can see from the concept plan, takes up very little space on the property and really doesn't have a lot of equipment there except to come back and repair as needed or to store in between jobs. But those are, the machines are usually taken from job to job. So Mayor or Mr. Brooks, either one will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Sir, thank you. Who else wishes to speak for or against this request? No one is coming forward then, therefore the public hearing is closed. Rezoning request seventeen A eleven, Commissioner Gooch.
Blackman is smoking hot tonight. Think Rockville. A motion to approve, Mr. Chair, with conditions.
Have a second, Commissioner Phillips. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, one no. All right, Mr. Spence, you can record one no and all the others yes. All right, that finishes all our rezoning requests. And now we're ready for reports by our standing committees. Commissioner Jordan, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Good evening, everybody. Got to tell you, I'm a little apprehensive being up here. I'm used to Ms. Ely being up here, but she's in the audience, it's like the teacher's in the room watching the student or something. I probably messed this up. Consent agenda, should have thought of it years ago. Item K one A, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, decrease restricted for capital, one million three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. To increase expenditures transferred to other funds, one million three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. That's the records management system for the jail, records management and jail management software. We've talked about this for the last few years. Is this coming out of the restricted-for-capital development taxes? This is what we planned on the whole time, there's no surprises there. Fire and rescue, decrease restricted-for-capital, one hundred thousand dollars. Increase expenditures contributions, one hundred thousand dollars. That's contributions to Christiana Fire Department for half of the building cost. And other public health and welfare, we've got decrease unassigned balance, sixty thousand dollars. Increase other contracted services, sixty thousand dollars. That for autopsies to finish out at the end of the budget year. Resolved this eleventh day of May, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer and several others there. Any discussion? Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. McAdoo and I would just like to ask a real brief question. The new hardware, software, the new information package that's going in out at the sheriff's office has been bounced through our information systems office and they're on board with and have approved everything. I need...
Yes, absolutely.
This is the same thing Murpher Police Department uses and several other entities that can all share information through it. I did, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, I had been on record from the beginning and will affirm once again that this is, we are involved, yes, sir.
Other questions? All right, Mr. Schaefer.
This is the second and third step. We approved the CAD system last year and it was implemented in December, first of January timeframe somewhere, and it's working like it's supposed to. And these are the next two steps to get us communications throughout the county.
Right, any other discussion? All right, if none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
We've got an assistance-to-firefighter grant for ambulance service and related budget amendment, item K one B. Whereas Rutherford County Emergency Medical Service has been awarded a two thousand and sixteen assistance-to-firefighter grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and requiring a ten percent match in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And whereas the emergency medical service will use the grant to purchase eight power cots for ambulances. Therefore, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to accept the two thousand and sixteen assistance-to-firefighter grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and requiring a ten percent match in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars to purchase eight power cots for ambulances. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the proceeds from the grant and to appropriate said proceeds. Ambulance, decrease assigned for public health, thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Increase revenue, other direct federal revenue, one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Increase expenditures, other health equipment, one hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Resolved this eleventh day of May, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Here's the, and Schaefer and others. Questions or discussion? Good news. All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
I would like to report that the budget committee...
Yes, motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to report the budget committee has started our joyous time of going over the budget review Tuesday night, and we are meeting again this coming Tuesday night, this coming Thursday night, and the following Tuesday night, we'll be meeting at the school board central office with a joint meeting with the health department and the school board. And if any of you all are curious about any of that, feel free to come join us and share the fun. Thank you a lot.
Mr. Jordan.
And congratulations to Ms. Ely, by the way.
If I may, I want to indulge you. You can read this little letter here. And I'd like for Ms. Nolan to join Mr. Jordan here at the podium, please, to receive some very important recognition.
This letter, of course, appreciate the heads up on that, Mayor. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association to the Honorable Ernest G. Burgess, Mayor of Rutherford County. Dear Mayor Burgess, we are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report, CAFRA report, for the fiscal year ended two thousand and sixteen qualifies for GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government, governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government, an award of financial reporting achievement, AFRA, is also presented to the individuals or department designated by the government as primarily responsible, as primarily responsible for having earned this certificate. This award has been sent to the submitter as designated on the application. We hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation of this certificate and award of financial reporting achievement, and that appropriate publicity will be given to this notable achievement. A sample news release is enclosed to assist with this effort. We hope that your example will encourage other government officials in their efforts to achieve and maintain an appropriate standard of excellence in financial reporting. Sincerely, Todd Bukema, Acting Director, Technical Services Center. Mr. Broden, you get all that? And we have the...
We can give that to him.
We can give him this news release and congratulations to Mayor Nolan, Mayor Nolan, Director Nolan and her department.
Let's give her a round of applause.
Well, thank you. Couldn't do it without all of y'all, that's for sure. And my staff, when I present credit to my staff.
And I think she's already lost count of how many consecutive years her department has earned that certificate of recognition of excellence. So they're to be commended. We are blessed to have them with us. Okay, let me see. Well, we have one other committee with a report. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee has a resolution to approve the public records policy. Mr. Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steering has one resolution for your consideration this evening, Commissioners. It's a resolution to adopt a public records policy for Rutherford County, Tennessee. Whereas Tennessee Code annotated ten-seven-five-oh-three-G, two thousand and sixteen Public Chapter seven-twenty-two requires county entities to adopt a public records policy by July the first, two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Tennessee Code annotated eight-four-six-zero-four-A-four, two thousand and sixteen Public Chapter seven-twenty-two requires the Office of Open Records Counsel to establish a model of public records policy. And whereas the OORC's model of public records policy requires county entities to make certain selections under the policy. And whereas Rutherford County desires to adopt the OORC's model, public policy, records policy with necessary selections and modifications. policy, records policy with necessary selections and modifications, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commission as follows. Section 1, the model record, public policy developed by the OORC with appropriate selections and revisions chosen by Rutherford County, Tennessee, is attached to this resolution as Exhibit 1, and is hereby adopted as a public records policy for Rutherford County, Tennessee. Section 2, county entities and elected officials may adopt separate policies, or by default, accept this policy as a public records policy for that entity. Unless a separate policy is adopted by the county entity or elected official, this policy shall apply to each county entity and elected official's office. Section 3, the Office of the Register of Deeds has approved its own public records policy attached as here as Exhibit 2, which is offered for presentation but requires no approval. Section 4, the Assessor of Property has adopted its own open records policy attached as Exhibit 3, which is offered for presentation but does not require approval. Section 5, the Rutherford County Trustee has its own open records policy attached as Exhibit 4, which is offered for presentation but does not require approval. In Section 6, this resolution shall take effect July the 1st, 2017. The public welfare requiring it resolve this the 12th day of May 2017. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussion? If not then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Josh, that seems pretty easy now, after weeks and weeks of iteration on this, don't you? Good job, Josh, and those that assisted you with that. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the next on our agendas, under any other business, is an executive session with our county attorney. Before we do that, I will give anyone that wishes to make a public comment about some event or something that's happening, before we have a little bit of our audience left. Mrs. Allen?
On May 18, Motlow will be hosting an alumni roadshow mixer at La Tavola in Smyrna on Front Street. They will be, have the opportunity to meet Dr. Kinkle and get some alumni swag. On Friday, June 2, The Taste of Smyrna will be hosted at the TriStar Stonecrest Medical Center. It's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The Smyrna Lions Club and the YMCA will both be beneficiaries from that fundraiser. The following night, Saturday, June 3, Simply Smyrna is a music festival. It's held every year. It's in the Historic Depot District on Front Street, and it'll be from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And just as a footnote, Commissioner Stevens recently gave the commencement speech at Motlow's graduation. They had two ceremonies. This was the first group of Tennessee Province students to graduate, so this was covered by New York Times, PBS, NPR. He gave them a terrific speech on inspiring them to serve their community. So, there were 950 graduates of that class, so that's a lot to celebrate. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? Commissioner Sarino, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I serve on the Board of the Read to Succeed in Bradford County, so the director, Lisa Pitchell, send the book along, so go ask Commissioner to take, you know, a chance to read, and then after that person, and the next person will be assumed for reading. So, I will, anyone who want to volunteer, be the first person?
Now, does anyone wish, he's already read this book, it's this book of whatever, the Read to Succeed is selected. Does anyone choose to take that book for him and make a commitment to read that?
It's a good book. It's about flying to Hindenburg.
About flying to Hindenburg, okay. So, Commissioner P is interested, Mr. Sarino, so you may share that book with him, if you would, please.
Okay, well...
Anyone else have any announcements of any events? Commissioner Reed?
This Saturday, over at the Foster Midland Fire Department, they're having their first fundraiser. It's a pancake breakfast that morning, starting at 9 o'clock, going to 11 o'clock, and I think it'd be a good opportunity if you go there and see the new station, see a new pumper that the county has furnished for them over that way, and get a chance to meet some real good firemen, and seeing what's doing there and going to happen there. I've spent the day today out at the Sam Davis Home. I was once again teaching them how to process meat, as you did in 1860. They had over 1,000 children out there today, going around and seeing what was done there on the farm. If any of you are planning to be out that way tomorrow, it's days on the farm again out there. It's been canceled due to the weather. They were a little concerned about what we'd do with the schoolchildren there, so you might want to pass that word on.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments or announcements? All right then, ladies and gentlemen, we're going into this executive session with our county attorney. Everyone that's not a member of the commission needs to be excused from this, and we will come back into session just briefly to make whatever report needs to be made after that, but, so, we're going to give you just a minute to leave, and then we will go into the executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session. We have been in a executive session with our county attorney regarding litigation with respect to misdemeanor probation. Mr. McCray, you might just summarize briefly what we've done, and then we'll see if there's any appropriate action that wishes to be taken.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, we have just been in a several-minute executive session discussion regarding one of the pending active litigations against the county involving probation. You, I've presented information and brought you up to speed about the status of the case. You asked several questions, all of which is appropriate, and there's been no deliberation. And so, now, at this point, if you have any sort of motion to make as a result of that executive session, now's the appropriate time to do that.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, I would like to make a motion. The motion is to allow the mayor to settle the damages and injunctive components of the PCC lawsuit in a manner in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, as discussed in the executive session of May 11, 2017.
For a second, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add an amendment to this motion, and that's that the settlement is subject to commission approval, either at our next regular meeting or a special call meeting.
Motion to second to that amendment. Further discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote on the amendment first. All of you in favor of that amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's been approved. Now, I just vote on the motion next.
The motion is amended.
Okay, now we're voting on the motion as amended. Any discussion on that? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, is there any other further business to come before this body tonight? If not, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.